Good morning, everybody. This is Jonathan Nez. We are doing our town hall, yes, on a Wednesday. Usually it'd be on a Tuesday, but because of the holidays, the Navajo National Navajo Code Talkers Day, which was recognized on Monday, we moved the town hall to Wednesday, today, 10:00 AM. So we do our very best to get information, up-to-date information that's happening throughout the world, throughout the country, and keep you informed with what's happening. Now with, let's just say, viruses, right? We do have COVID-19 still here, and now we have reports of monkeypox. And those are items of concern for us here on Navajo. And let me just also say, at this point, no confirmed monkeypox case on the Navajo Nation. We continue to monitor that throughout the country. So before we begin, let us open in a word of prayer. Let's pray. Aro koon ro inanachain lagi baheh niitsen. Aro aaltsko kudo hane. Nihekeni dnebechekon dehliin yada halne dolel. Do hadali ni dolel. Do kudo daist sa dolel. A koon nahlnegi denderke. Aro di ro monkeypox wuliyehegi nahlnegi ro nietsa quinsen. Do yad ollnet aashwon. Ehut aaltsodilson di chinge. Aro nchan dalne shigek kudo hane. Nihekeni dnebechek dehliin egi ro belhon lo dolel. Gidni ni dolel. Aro yod do koon haneegi. Nihekeni dnebechek kudehliin egi do. Daist sa dolel. Dechno dechnoshige. Do shudneakon nasdey kragi. So konsol eh eh sodisin behasid dolel. Niye binashe Jesus Christ aho deh dolel. Amen. So the prayer for the nation. I know we got a lot of rain throughout the past few weeks. And, you know, we just thank God for the moisture. We're getting moisture. We prayed for it, you know, a month ago, a month and a half ago. We were sitting in the heat, and drought was prevalent. Animals were needing water. There was no vegetation, water for our crops, excuse me. And today, for the past few, several weeks, we've gotten a lot of rain. So we thank the Creator for the rain. I know that there are a lot of people that are affected by the downpour, roads washed out. You know, our team, Navajo Department of Transportation, is out there doing their work with the BIA in the counties and the state to repair the roads. Some of these roads that have high counts of people utilizing, these roads are our priority. And those that have less traffic count, you know, we're getting to those. We try to repair them, and then the rain comes again and washes some of those same roads out. And I bring this up because we're still amidst a public health emergency, ladies and gentlemen. Through COVID-19, we also developed a preparedness team, reactivated our preparedness team for the monkeypox. And so our first responders, our service providers are doing, focusing on that and also on the monsoon season. And if you have some questions or comments, or you need to report some damage to the roads or from the flooding, we ask you to email us at the monsoon website, which is, and I'll give you the email now, Navination Division of Community Development, monsoon relief. And that email is monsoonrelief@navaho-chapters.org. Again, monsoon relief, all one word, M-O-N-S-O-O-N-R-E-L-I-F, at navaho-chapters, one word, dot org. And we are getting that information to our counties, the BIA, and other service providers to assist. There's a lot of flooding last night, a lot of downpour in the Winter Rock area. A lot of flooding happened. Some of our offices had some damage too as well. So just ask for your patience. Again, amidst a pandemic. We appreciate everybody tuning in every Tuesdays, but today is Wednesday. We moved this week the town hall to Wednesday because of Monday's National Navajo Code Talkers Day holiday. So we want to give you all an update on monkeypox. As we did with COVID-19, we are in the process of developing a more medical, Navajo medical term for monkeypox, so that everybody understands it. And the reason why we name these viruses in Navajo is so that our Navajo healthcare professionals can also use this for scientific research, scientific data, and also, so everybody is, or everyone knows what that terminology is, like the kusinskagin hasda itzata. Basically, it's the big cough or the big cold with the 19 on it, because that's a scientific term, COVID-19. And for monkeypox, we're in the process of developing a term. Naahlnegi sheina bechek dolel. So eh onishehazin dolel. No confirmed cases. Di monkeypox wuliyehegi nahlnegi inleitlo deh shla din ha'ot zogo. Eh aro yah ilnit akron. Nihe kudo sodilson. Do yad ollneta da di no. Sudisin behandeitsen. Din le shla din ha'ot zogo eh nahlnehi oteh. Eh beni na eh basothke do di. Kusinskagin hasda itzata. Gidna aneshigin. Nihe chinton, nihe sebke daske. Do di yildabedahtla da di. Nin egi hand sanitizer. Jo eh chosh doitini eginehse. Eh a. Egi eh di ro monkeypox wuliyehegi bez ah na aneshi oteh. So eh beni na eh kudo nihe joba deh ni ke hadai no llnen da di ne. Nihe maschodall. Ni do a di COVID-19 egibijjona aneshige eh monkeypox. So gidi na anesh. So eh beni na eh ya hadai no llne do. Oheh dehliin ni dolel. Di monkeypox wuliyehegi eh. Do eh le zel ind. Yash do galtaya. Di kudokudolnaa ya. Do eh. Di nahlnegi. Kusinskagin hasda itzata. Nahaloma eh ya. Do ye go eh ya. Nihe tcha da no. Tchaneske deh dolel. Akon deh lodegishin eh abehzini ye. La da lodeh. Tsdispa. Do dolel. Nihe jio ehut a monkeypox nahlne. So eh sheban. Nihe behazin dolel. Kudo she eh ya. Nihe zel indo. Nihe ch'ashtoneh leleh dolel. Naahlnegi. You know, we just want to just let everybody know, there's again, no confirmed cases here of monkeypox. Same protocols that we have for COVID-19, you know, hand sanitizer usage, mask usage, those social distancing, those regular protocols that are put in place will also keep monkeypox from spreading. And again, it's not here on Navajo, and we pray that it doesn't. But we just want everybody to be cautious. We are working with our Navajo Department of Health, our Health Command Operations Center, our IHS, our 638s, our organizations, to make sure that everybody's safe. And we do have a team that's been, reestablished a preparedness team, so that we can continue to keep everyone updated on monkeypox and COVID-19. Now with COVID-19, we have a vaccination. Monkeypox, we do have vaccines available as well. We requested the White House, the Department of Health and Human Services, for more vaccinations if it does, you know, come here on Navajo, just like we did with COVID-19. And so we are looking forward to those vaccines coming, just to be on the safe side. And for COVID-19, because of the vaccination, not that many people are ending up in the hospital. It's just like the flu, you know, the flu, we have a flu shot. I think really, as what we hear all over the country from the healthcare professionals, COVID is, COVID-19 is here, and I'm sorry to say, here to stay. We did our very best to push back on the virus, but not everybody follows those protocols with wearing masks and using hand sanitizer, social distancing. So it's just going to continue to be around throughout the United States. But here on Navajo, what's helping is that we have a high percentage of people vaccinated. That's a good thing. That's why nobody's, we see the cases go up, but not that many people are ending up in the hospital. So just ask those that have their vaccine, that did catch the virus, usually four to five days, and it doesn't, you know. You know, you're not having symptoms for a long time, like before, without the vaccines. So vaccines do help. I mean, look at us, Navajo. We're a case study on that. If anybody wants to know how vaccines help the region or a community, they're looking at Navajo for that study. And we just need to continue to wear our masks, social distance, and our hand sanitizer usage. Now, in terms of events, you know, we had the Fourth of July celebration here in Winter Rock and other places throughout the Navajo Nation. People stayed home, which was great. You know, that way people don't leave the Navajo Nation and potentially bring back COVID-19. Stay here. It's like a bubble over the Navajo Nation that protects and keeps our group here on Navajo. I understand that many of our Navajo people live off the Navajo Nation, go to school off the Navajo Nation, work off the Navajo Nation, but we always encourage them to get tested as they come home and visit their family, you know, test kits are available. If you need test kits, nine two eight eight seven one seven zero 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 seven thousand. We can get you some test kits. And local chapter houses do have home test kits as well. Or you can go to the federal website, Department of Health and Human Services in the CDC. They have test kits that they can send out to you. So it's good to stock up and keep some away too. Just in case you feel some kind of symptoms of a cold, you hurry up and swap yourself, you know, for us. Here, here on Navajo Nation, I just wanted to share, this is what, how many tests I've taken. My family have taken, you know, just to be on the safe side. This is a lot of these test kits, you know, you got so many of them. We even write our names on it, and they've been very helpful. So there's this, we've been testing ourselves, overtesting ourselves, but it's always good to be safe. And once you do get tested, go directly to the healthcare facility, because they need to know in terms of contact tracing purposes, so that whoever you around, they contact them and make sure that they get tested and they get isolated and are in quarantine. We just got to follow those same protocols, ladies and gentlemen. I plead with you. Fourth of July celebration was good. People that were out were still wearing masks, even outdoors. And these events can take place safely. Now that I say that, next week is the Chinli Parade and the Fair. That's going to continue, of course. There'll be guidelines in place that Dr. Jim will talk about today, our Director for Navajo Department of Health. You know, parades are outdoors. We're going to have heavy security, heavy police officers just because of what happened at the Gallup Indian Tribal Ceremonial. You know, and that was something that nobody should be going through. And there's going to be a lot of public safety presence from our counties or state and our Navajo Nation Police Department. So and we just got to be aware of our surroundings too at these fair and parades. If there's something out of the ordinary, you let the public safety personnel know. And we all need to be vigilant, you know. The day and age not to be aware of your surroundings is gone. You got to be aware of your surroundings. And then wear your mask outdoors, you know, because the parades, you'll have a lot of people. If you're in your pods, your family pods, your family groups, then that's okay to not wear a mask as you're outside. But if not, if you're close by other people that you don't know, wear a mask. And then these events that are happening at the fairs, each one of them are going to be the responsibility of the coordinators of those events. They need to hold everyone accountable, and we as the public need to hold the coordinators accountable. Someone's not wearing a mask, someone's not doing what they're supposed to, they need to tell the coordinator. You know, you can't have police everywhere at all times. We don't have that many police. So it's us Navajo people, we need to regulate ourselves so that we can keep everybody safe. And then in early September, of course, you know, the Navination Fair and Parade. At this point in time, it looks like we're going to be having that, unless something else comes up, but right now it looks like that's going to happen. So again, the same, same things there. Guidelines will be provided to the coordinators, and also we'll provide that through social media and the media, so that everybody knows what to expect during the parades and fairs that are going to be happening. And Eastern Fair did cancel their fair and parade. They took that initiative, which is okay, which is good. We recognize that as well. And so we will update you on any changes. We are looking at reopening the wellness centers too, probably at 50%. We know that the health and well-being of our Navajo people is very important. So stay active, you know, if you're, because physical activity and eating good is a way to push back on COVID-19 as well, because you strengthen your immune system. Those of you that are farming, man, all that rain to your farms, I'm sure there's going to be some produce. We'd like to purchase some of those produce so we can hand it out during the parades as well. So let us know. Again, nine two eight eight seven one seven thousand. So I'll turn the time over to Dr. Jill Jim now. Thank you so much. Adat ha'halian ashtwon shige nohlini. Do di parades, do fairs, she eh ya. Ahhot edo deleh. Chinli jido ahhot ah. Na demo aleh. Shehah eh ya. Aji da nihe nahldo deleh. Aro na kido tcha. Di moa izlin o she eh koditserahot zam de she ahhot edo deleh. Parades, do fairs. Adat ha'halian dolel. Gidada in shige nohlini. Kudo she eh Dr. Jill Jim. Tsdispa hayaja. La deh tsulideh. Din egi nihejje. Ha tsijto deleh. So konsol shehijje hasid dolel. Do adat ha'halian dolel. Nihe jisalano. Hehna. Dr. Jim?
Thank you, President. Ikehat nonshonad ani for your message and your ongoing information to the public regarding the COVID-19. I am Dr. Jill Jim. I am the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. I just want to reiterate that we are still in an emergency declaration here in the Navajo Nation. It may not seem that way as I think we're trying to transition to some sort of normalcy. And I believe that the toll of keeping ourselves healthy has been very important for the last couple of years and today, and going forward. I know there are a lot of things happening. We have kids that are back in school. I know we're going to issue out new public health emergency orders. And the Navajo Nation will still have fair and parades, but it'll be different. I think that when visitors come onto the Navajo Nation, and just even our own family visitors that come home, and they're not visitors, but they come home from the city, I think we all need to still be very careful, because the numbers are still high across the United States, just not on the Navajo Nation. So sometimes I think we kind of excuse the fact that we're not in a pandemic and everything should be back to normal, and we shouldn't do any more mitigation strategies. But that's not, that's not our message. I think we all need to be very considerate while we are here as a human being. And it comes back from our Navajo teachings on himasandon, nihechay benan tshinchi. And that's how we talk to each other. That's how we respect each other. And I think that's what made us come through this pandemic, a lot of reminders about our teachings. And it's not, it can probably be in other cultures or other racial and ethnicity groups, but here for the Navajo people, I think it's very important that we reiterate those. We mainly don't really think about just ourselves. We think about other people, especially our elders. And those are the ongoing messages that we always see and hear is the anihibeyah. It starts with us, but then also we think about our relatives. And a lot of these teachings, I think, may have maybe hurt and challenging for our younger generations. I know that I have kids too, and I think sometimes I have to remind them about our teachings. And sometimes they ask why, and it's always like, I think, back in the day when we were, we asked questions. So y'all, nice this kid, nice this kid, things like that, I think, used to be sort of things that we used to be asked. But curiosity, I think we always want to answer to things. And I think that now we're changing, and I think we need to learn and adapt, but also we need to respect how our elders and our grandparents and our parents have taught us a lot of things to get through life, and in nashin bebeniya. So I think with COVID, it probably made us think about our own ways to deal with things. But I know that we are still healing from COVID. And even though we're not entirely in recovery, we don't know the end result of COVID. It might continue and mutate as we, as I talk about it right now into different variants. But I think that we now have the ability, and it's all related to discipline, I think, understanding. There's a lot of people that got COVID, and there's many more that probably didn't get COVID, because they were taking all the precautions that they needed. And then there's others we can't explain through science too, and that didn't get COVID. And so there's just a lot of things up in the air, and sometimes we get questioned about, well, well, I know that vaccines may not work, and so-and-so still got sick. I was still wearing a mask, and I still got sick, and all of these things that we all say. And, and those are probably just sort of, it just happened. But I think we just need to continue to practice these things that we know has worked and have worked to some extent. And maybe in your case, it didn't work, but I think that if we continue to do this, we'll try to keep the numbers down, and we'll also keep having, having our loved ones possibly get infected with COVID and other things. So I think it's a reminder to all of us just to rethink about our teachings and coming back on to our sort of like on where we're at today. And I think we can't do anything about the past, but there was a lot of trauma that we went through individually and how we felt like when we were isolated and quarantined. And, and I think there's the message is to be just sort of finding your own self and finding your own way to figure out how to heal through this. Sometimes I think that's why yad alah, oh, no. Oh, hanadat ne. And maybe there's some of us that feel like that, but I think it's very important that I seen nihehni kohadni. And so, and it is really, I think we're adopting and we're changing some public health orders to kind of loosen some of the restrictions. But I think it's a good reminder, and some of us, we do keep our mask on when we're out, out and about in gatherings or in places outside the reservation. And maybe on the reservation, we put a lot of trust in our relatives maybe, and we didn't know that it was going to be highly transmittable, and it is, it's airborne. And those are things we learn. So I think as we move into the next phase of these orders, there's going to be some expansion of social gatherings. There'll be some will have no limits, like outdoor gatherings and drive-in gatherings. But I think with the mask, when we are lifting the outdoor mask requirement, but if you're within six feet, and really you can still get COVID if you're not within a certain distance. And you might be at an event where you're cheering or yelling or whatever, and there is still the risk for transmission. So I think just understanding that, but the indoor mask mandate is going to be still very important. So, and that's just something that we've always put in place. CDC provides recommendations. We necessarily don't follow all of the recommendations, because we view them as a credible entity, given its guidance. But sometimes it's really hard to go back if you lift everything and then you're trying to make adjustments. But here on the Navajo Nation or with our Navajo people, we really have been very conservative and really taking small baby steps at a time. And when we go off the reservation, we're like, oh, we're not on the Navajo Nation. We can go gather. We can have weddings out here. We can have all sorts of these activities, and we don't have to wear our mask. And I think that's just sort of like, okay, well. And I think that's just sort of like, okay, well, what message are we doing that? When when we come home and um we know our kids are safe in school and you come back from the weekend, you come back from the gathering. And and I think it's very important that we just kind of rethink about this because now we have families moving around, there's school again. Everyone, every school I hope out there is providing in-person learning safely. And I know there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I think with um these fair and uh parades that are coming up, we're really just gonna be encouraging individuals to take that extra step. And um even though if you're with your grandmother or your Nellie or whoever, you're going to the parade with Bataha. I mean, and and we can't, we we can't take back some of the things that we might have done. And and if we had, we can't change anything in the past if we love, lost, lost loved ones to COVID. And it might not, it probably wasn't anybody's fault, but I think one thing we can do is we can prevent. And so um for those that are out there, if you still have an an elder, um please take care of them. Because if it's aunt, that I think not on tien do Allah, I think Bataha. And it's um, I myself, I think I have lost um a lot, um some elders in my family. And now I'm going to have to resort to my uncles and aunts out there to continue our teachings and learning from everything. So I think it's really valuable to reiterate that um some of us are in that position. So if you still have a a Nellie, a Masana and a Che, but we have lots of relatives. But I think if you have that still in your immediate family, really take that um into consideration to take care of them. Because um a lot of restrictions have been lost, but COVID is still around. We are still seeing um numbers, but people are not being hospitalized for it. So but if there's a situation, if there have underlying health conditions, we don't want them to get sick. There is um treat or tested treat programs. Um, so once someone starts having symptoms, making sure that you don't, you're not out and about basically. Um, wear a mask indoors if you know you're positive and um also get tested to get oral treatment if you have underlying health conditions so that your symptoms are not severe and you've recovered. I think the Navajo people have taken um advantage of the test of treat program and that's why we're seeing numbers, but we're not seeing large hospitalizations and transfers. So um I think that we just need to be reminded um all the time. And we don't know um the end result, as I mentioned. So um just take care of yourselves um out there. Sike do sedene um while you're in the city, um while you're at home and you're traveling. Ah she um on the case, she is thought so just um be mindful about all of those um recommendations that we still have. And I think we tried the best that we can, but we can't really enforce everything a hundred percent as President mentioned. But I think she nothaha ni do, da ta ni zin do, da ta ha niya do. Oh, what I seen day ya, no so you cut also. Um, and then there's other threats that we have now, we have the monkeypox situation. And that's really um also something that we really need to message out um with our younger generation too, it might be middle age. But I think um we have talked about monkeypox and transmission, really um close to close contact. And I think we've mentioned that before. Um, and some of the cases that CDC has reported were among those that were really sexually active as well. So just making sure that um we're really considerate with our younger um people. So if you're a parent or a Nellie or aunt or uncle, talk to your um, talk to your kids, talk to your um other people about this, there are risks for monkeypox. And our goal is to prevent um some, someone from getting mu- monkeypox. And that really just means um the same concept with COVID, washing your hands, making sure you're aware of um your environment and trying to prevent monkeypox as well. So she odd odd saw sometimes we are where we can just go about and do anything like normal anymore. A date oh, what's it on Holland and we're really considerate. We have to take a a hand sanitizer with us on our own. Eight of credit on hitche the be yet. How that's elder, having a a Santa um like a PPE kit or at home, often when you have visitors that come to your house, um having gloves, mask and hand sanitizers for them to use when they come into your home too. Um, so she what on you know how's on do, those are things that we can prepare for is making that sort of a routine and I see don't you bad the husband. So I think there's the, the my message here today is, I know I talked a little bit, but I just wanted to encourage our Navajo people to kind of um think about ourself and where we're at with this pandemic. And we often see the cases are increasing, which they are, they're still up there, but we're not seeing a large hospitalization. So when you're out at the fair or parade, um you're not gonna be maybe entirely forced to put on your mask, but we're, we'll give reminders, we'll let you know. But I think what we want to see is that you take that own initiative. Um, on the here, um Bataha, no, so no, you can put your mask on and encourage others to wear their mask because it is very preventable. And if you just do that one thing, you could prevent COVID that day when you're at the parade or when you're at the fair and that's your personal choice to do that. So um, eh she Bataha, no, so we don't need to be policing everybody and it's gonna be difficult to do that. So she on the big end, the one, the 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 she don't know, so then the this is what we're messaging here from the, for the health of our Navajo people. We'll continue to encourage people to take all their precautions that they need. So I just wanted to end with that and you'll see new orders out um this week. So um just look out for that. We probably will repeat it next week when the, when the orders do come out. So um, she Kedos, she the nation, I can't die some of the sake, I see eh day ya. It's easy to be a city, though, I do, I'll give it to Dell. He's with the Epidemiology Center and he'll give us a rundown of the numbers and where we're at with the pandemic. So Dell, take you, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jim, President and my colleagues and hi, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. I'm going to go over briefly the the latest COVID numbers we have on the nation. As always, it's a seven-day time window that we cover from August fifth through the eleventh. And this is our recent cases and trends, reinfections are included here. This is a sixty-day time window going back to June thirteenth. And going forward to all the way to uh August eleventh. The blue bars are the daily case counts. As you can see, there's a lot of variation. Your accounts every day and that's been the case throughout the pandemic. And however, the 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 this orange line is the the nine-day average. So over nine-day average, so now we're at about a hundred and fifty um is where we ended. Um, hundred and fifty cases, which as Dr. Jim mentioned, is a still, that's a lot of cases for us. And then these are three core metrics that we uh look at. Um, the Nat, the new Nat, Navajo Nation new cases per hundred thousand people over a seven-day period is now at six hundred and fifty-four cases per hundred thousand people. Um, it is a little bit higher than last week, so uh continue to see a lot of cases. Percent staff beds occupied by COVID patients is now at six point nine percent. This is a seven-day average. Uh, it's fairly remained stable from last week. And then this is our other core metric, Navajo Nation new COVID hospital admission rate. He's at zero point six five. Uh, hospitalization rate per hundred thousand people, which is a medium risk. Nationally, this is um across the US, all ages is at one point seven. So we are um below that. So again, that's a a good sign for us that the hospital admission rate is is um low or at medium risk. The other metrics that you all are probably familiar with, which we've been reporting throughout the pandemic, is really the supplemental metrics here. There were hun- one thousand thirty-seven new cases over that seven-day time period, which is a minus two percent change from the previous week. And then the seven-day lab-based test positivity is at twenty-five percent. And this continues to decline. Last week was twenty-seven percent. So it does continue to decrease, so that's, you know, a good sign as well. Hospital capacity here, bed occupancy uh also continues to remain stable. Regular hospital beds at sixty percent, ICU beds at seventy percent. So uh remaining stable, oh, sorry. Then the vaccine coverage here for Navajo Nation residents. We're now almost at uh sixty-nine percent that have completed primary series. Then almost at forty-four percent are now up to date. And then we continue to surveil the COVID strain surveillance on the nation and all of the Omicron, you know, the sublineages of Omicron have all been now detected on the nation. This is the latest uh vaccine uh profile for Navajo Nation as of August sixth, which is last uh about a week and a half ago. So now a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two Navajo Nation residents have completed the primary series, which is at uh sixty-nine percent. Navajo Nation residents who are up to date are at eighty-two thousand and forty-six. So that's a at forty-four percent. The two Epi curves for the the U, the US in the blue line here and then the Navajo Nation in the orange line. So we are continuing to see a high number of cases on the nation. And also, you know, the US continues to go on this, to be on this plateau. And then this is the uh seven-day uh case rate. Comparing Navajo Nation here in the yellow bar to the fifty states. And as you can see, uh Navajo Nation continues to be the uh first with a high uh six hundred and fifty-four uh cases per hundred thousand as a seven-day case rate. And you can see the red bars are bordering states, New Mexico. Also, it continues to see a lot of cases and then Arizona, Utah and Colorado. As you can see here, uh across the US, seven-day case rates. I'll just cover within our region, New Mexico uh continues to be in this darkish shaded blue with the the higher um seven-day case rate of COVID cases over a seven-day period, followed by Arizona and then Utah and Colorado. Community transmission of COVID remains high uh throughout the country, especially in our region uh with the red color meaning high COVID transmission. This is the latest numbers for our COVID strain surveillance as of August eighth, which is last Monday. I think this is going to be updated today or tomorrow. Uh, so this slide remains the same from last week. Just a couple of highlights here is that the BA five uh sublin- sublineage of Omicron is now the really, we're starting to see more of those um sublineages uh across the Navajo Nation. As you can see, went from a hundred and five to a hundred and eighty-three. And then the other one is this B, B two dot twelve dot one, we continue to see that as well. Uh, went from two hundred and thirty-three to three hundred and eight. So those are the two main highlights so far of the, on the latest report. And then this is just uh the top chart here is just the service, all the facilities on Navajo. IXS and six thirty-eights, which is they're all, they're all participating in this uh COVID strain surveillance. And then down here is the, as you can see, I mentioned the BA five sublineage. We're beginning to see more of that uh currently, plus the, you know, the BA two dot twelve dot one uh as well. So across the US, the COVID variant profile, the BA five continues to be the predominant variant across the US, making up about eighty-eight percent of uh all the uh variants for sublineages for Omicron. And then last, this is our high-risk chapter profile here. Sixty-three chapters made the list this week. Uh, last week was sixty-nine, so it went down a little bit. Uh, and then as you move across uh the table here to the right is uh all the way to the far right is this red, the red uh column is going back six weeks at least. And these are the forty-two chapters that have been on this list, on this list for at least uh six weeks. And just, you know, just to add, just all throughout the pandemic, I would say like these chapters here on the far right. Uh, one of the characteristics is, in my opinion, that these are the chapters. They tend to be higher in population size for the chapter. And then also, you know, their location on geographically on the re- on the nation. Uh, they tend to be along major fairways um or throughways to get from one part of the rez to the other. And also, some of them are located near a border town, like Upper Fruitland, you know, being near uh Farmington. So these are uh forty-two chapters that may, that have been on this list for at least um six weeks. So that's my last slide. I'm going to stop here. And I think I'm the last presenter, so. Um, I think we're going to end here and thank you all for joining us. And have a good rest of your day. Thank you.
Just uh joining um a little bit late. So I'm happy to share um just some um, you know, general information about monkeypox. I know that there are a lot of um questions out there and, you know, many people are interested in uh raising awareness and and um learning a little bit more about about monkeypox because we've been hearing about it. Um, so I do have, I don't know if it would be helpful, but I could um share some um brief slides if that would be possible. Let me see here. Able to see these slides? I'm just gonna go through some um uh general information and I'm happy to take calls, but this will be brief, maybe, you know, um five, five minutes or so. And um just to start, um I think many people have already heard about monkeypox in the news. This is actually a virus that's been around for a very long time in the global world, but not commonly seen in the United States. It's a virus and it's in the same family as the smallpox virus. Um, some people might hear that it could be related to chickenpox. I just wanted to clarify that it's not. And it's helpful to understand that monkeypox um rarely causes very, very serious illness. It rarely causes death, but um it can be painful and it can be um, you know, a pretty serious uh rash or illness episode. And we want to do everything possible to be prepared and um take precautions um so that um we can know how it's can be spread and to prevent spread whenever possible. So it's a little different than COVID. It's not really um spread um through cough or respiratory symptoms. It's more direct contact, skin-to-skin contact with a person who could be infected. So um here you can kind of see a picture of um the map where where in Africa, there are some blue dots. That's where monkeypox has historically been seen, you know, for many, many years. And as you've been hearing in the news, in this year of 2022, there have been a rise of global cases, which are all of the orange dots. So at this point, you know, this is not an infection that is directly affecting the Navajo Nation, to my understanding at this time. However, we want to make sure that community members are really knowledgeable in terms of, you know, what to look out for. And also so that there is not unnecessary fear or anxiety about monkeypox. So, you know, just to kind of reiterate, we have a lot of great tools, medications, testing, vaccines, and contact tracing so that we can take really active measures. And the Navajo Nation is already taking a lot of these steps to prevent any kind of possible spread in the community. We also know that it has been detected, you know, in the four states. So now is a really good time to raise that awareness. So in terms of symptoms, the most common one, of course, that people are hearing about is a rash. It can happen anywhere on the body. Oftentimes, the sores are painful. And it can start as maybe a few spots and then actually expand as more rashes over time. And as you can see here, some of the other symptoms are fever, feeling fatigued or tired, muscle aches, chills, swollen lymph nodes, and some cold-like symptoms. I'm going to just show very quickly some of the rash images. And you can see that they might start almost like a little blister, like a tiny little fluid-filled blister. And then it can actually change over time. So what you can see in the bottom row is that over time, it can start to almost scar over and scab. Anytime that there is a rash, that's the period of time that in theory, the infection can spread from one person to another. So not to cause a lot of, you know, fear or concern. Really, what we're seeing is that the most likely times when monkeypox is transmitted in this 2022 US cluster is through direct contact with skin. And oftentimes, this is sexual contact. So that again is the most common. If a person has monkeypox and has a rash, their personal items can have the virus and contact with those personal items could spread the rash. Direct skin-to-skin contact, even if it's not sexual or intimate contact, can spread monkeypox. And then these other items here, face-to-face time, pregnancy, and animal transmission are not as common. Face-to-face has to be, you know, very close, six feet or closer for three hours of war. So it's not like COVID. It really takes very, very close contact. It can be spread through pregnancy. And animal transmission is really only seen in places where the virus is observed in the animal population, which is not the case, you know, here in the region. So I wanted to, you know, make sure that we are thinking about spreading facts, not fear, and making sure we've heard that this virus disproportionately does affect people who are gay, transgender, men who have sex with men. That is true. And I want to make sure that we're thinking about really ensuring that we don't spread stigma and marginalize communities that may be experiencing more risk of monkeypox. So please just keep that in mind and make sure that we're taking our own precautions to prevent spread, but at the same time, not transmitting stereotypes or stigma against communities that at this time have been most, more disproportionately affected by the virus. There are vaccines and these are in the process of becoming available at the Navajo area IHS sites. Vaccines can be created because they can protect people who may have been recently exposed. And so we are establishing a warm line, which will be communicated soon, where people can call if they think that they may have had a recent exposure to monkeypox. And other than that, I think I just want to really share that all of the Navajo area sites are taking very active measures to be prepared to be preventing, you know, transmission and to be offering the vaccine to community members. I want to also reassure people that, you know, for the most part, all of the general precautions that we're doing, frequent hand washing, avoiding close contact with people who you don't know or crowded spaces, are going to be the ways that the general population can protect themselves from monkeypox. Other than that, for people who are sexually active, including men who have sex with men, gay, transgender people, there are additional precautions that people can take if they are sexually active. And we are happy to also share that information once the warm line is released, if people just want to have additional advice on how to stay safe. But for people who, at this time, since we have not really seen cases that are extended into the general population with any frequency in this community, I would really just encourage people to maintain the precautions that we are already learning through COVID. Masking, washing your hands. If you do travel, if you are not having skin-to-skin contact with high-risk individuals, then really the same kind of precautions that we're taking already should be really sufficient to be preventing any kind of, you know, sort of unintended monkeypox spread. So I just wanted to share a brief highlight of, you know, what this is about, who it's affecting now, but also to sort of, you know, comfort people and give people reassurance that at this point, the most important thing we can do is just the day-to-day sort of safe practices. And then people who are sexually active with new or multiple sexual partners, there are additional ways to stay safe. Those can be found on the CDC website. And on the warm line, which we'll be sharing out soon, vaccines will be available soon and in limited supply. And we'll also be sharing out more information about who could be eligible after a possible exposure for vaccines through the warm line. So I'll stop there. And I really appreciate the last-minute time to share a quick update. Thank you.